Excellent. Alright, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Regular Council Meeting. It is Thursday, September 10th, 2020. The time is now 6:15. We apologize for getting started a little bit late this evening. So due to concerns over COVID-19 exposure, the city's implemented measures to protect our community, including the closing of council chambers and limiting public attendance to electronic means only. Members of the public may view the live meeting proceedings on Tempe Channel 11 or attend the meeting virtually through Cisco WebEx Events by visiting www tempe.gov/clerk for more information. Item number one here is the moment of silence. If we could just take a very brief moment of silence. Thank you very much. Item number two here is the pledge of allegiance. I'm gonna go ahead and kick this off. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic of the citizens, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you, everyone. Alright, next up, we've got our meeting minutes. The meeting minutes will be Councilmember QB. Councilmember QB?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move to approve items 3A, 1 through 3, approval of city council meeting minutes.
Thank you. Thank you. Moved by Councilmember QB, seconded by Vice Mayor Keating. Any comments or questions? Are you then, all those in favor, please say aye. I shall do a roll call here, just to be sure, Xavier. Councilmember Devaro?
Aye.
Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams? And I vote aye as well. That item 3A, 1 through 3 passes, 7 to 0.
Mr. Mayor?
Here, Councilmember QB?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve items 3B, 1 through 10, acceptance of board, commission, and committee meeting minutes.
Great, thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
And who was my second there?
Councilmember Garland.
Alright, thank you, Councilmember Garland. So it's been moved by Councilmember QB and seconded by Councilmember Garland to accept the board, commission, and committee meeting minutes. I'm gonna go ahead and take a roll call vote. Councilmember Devaro?
Aye.
Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams? Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
Perfect. And I vote aye as well. Board, commission, and meeting minutes are accepted unanimously, 7 to 0. Next up, we have reports and announcements, mayor's reports and announcements. I do have a couple of announcements this evening. So first of all, just regarding city of Tempe board, commission, and committee vacancies and appointments. So in partnership with the city clerk's office, the city council just wants to thank all of our residents and other community members who offer their dedication and expertise to Tempe's boards, commissions, and committees. There will be several vacancies on 17 boards, commissions, and committees that need to be filled by the end of this calendar year. So we definitely need your help. So if you are reading, you're hearing this right now, please make sure to go to the clerk's part of the website and apply. We would love to have you apply. The new audit committee, as well as the Aviation Commission, Board of Adjustment, Commission on Disability Concerns, and Human Relations Commission are especially in need of applications. So please visit the city clerk's office website at tempe.gov/boardsandcommissions to learn more and also to apply. Tonight, the city council will be considering appointments to the Tempe Family Justice Commission as outlined in item 5A1 on the agenda. Second and last item here is just something regarding National Suicide Prevention Month. A good friend of mine asked that I bring this forward tonight as a proclamation. You know, National Suicide Month is really a great opportunity to raise the visibility of mental health resources and prevention services in our community. It really does affect our entire community. People are not alone. Everyone is personally impacted by this. So I'm gonna ask everyone watching this evening at home to find some time to call a friend this month, show your support by giving to organizations such as the Trevor Project, which is a special nonprofit that specifically provides crisis intervention and suicide prevention lifelines for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and questioning youth. So I want to also take the time to thank our city staff for the work that they do on suicide prevention and crisis response. And so with that being said, I want to go ahead really quickly and read this proclamation into the record. Alright. So whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death in the United States and the 3rd leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 10 to 14, and the 2nd leading cause of death for people aged 15 to 24. And whereas each and every suicide directly impacts a minimum of 100 individuals, including family, friends, coworkers, neighbors, and community members. And whereas the city of Tempe joins the community in recognizing September as Suicide Prevention Month by committing to the well-being of our residents and raising the visibility of the mental health resources and prevention services available to our community. And whereas Tempe has invested into our human services department that provides direct services to individuals in crisis and families affected by suicide. And whereas CARE7's crisis response team works with Tempe Police and Fire Medical Rescue to respond to mental health calls and connect with individuals experiencing suicidal ideation. And whereas through our CARE7 team, high-quality, low-cost counseling services can be accessed by all community members. And whereas the city partners with many community organizations and school districts in order to provide a continuum of care and to focus on suicide prevention, intervention, advocacy, support, and awareness. Now therefore, I, Corey D. Woods, Mayor of the city of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare September 2020 as National Suicide Prevention Month in Tempe, Arizona. Next up here, we have item 4B, city manager's reports and announcements. Mr. Manager, any reports?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I do have a couple of items for tonight. First, I want to have Samantha Zaa, who's standing by, along with Braden K., to give you a brief presentation on Arizona Indigenous Foodways. And I will note that this will be Samantha's last council meeting with us. She's been working with the Sustainability Office for the last several months, quite a few months now. We really appreciate the work she's done, and this will be her final presentation to all of you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And thank you, Samantha. You know, I've only been here for a couple of months now, but I've had an opportunity to work with you and be on a bunch of calls with you regarding the city's sustainability initiatives. And honestly, thank you so much for everything that you've done. We really appreciate your time and your service and commitment to the city of Tempe. So I wanted to extend my personal thank you to you.
Thank you, Mayor. So we should have a presentation. There we go. Alrighty. Okay, so do you have the controls or do I have the controls? Okay, you have them. Great. So thank you again, Mayor and Council. I've been working in sustainability since the last fall, and this has been my big project. So I'm excited to share with you the outcomes of the Arizona Indigenous Foodways Project. So we received this local grant last year in order to accelerate the sustainable local food economy through local pilot projects. Next slide. So we decided to focus on building equity in the food economy, which means elevating those voices that aren't being heard. So I partnered with indigenous food leaders across the state to capture indigenous perspectives in a publication called Arizona Indigenous Foodways Yearbook. Next slide, please. The publication features seven indigenous food economy leaders. It's in the final stages, should be completed, printed, and everything next week. This is a sneak peek at the layout with one of our farmers up on the Navajo Nation, Tyrone, who envisions that his community could become the breadbasket of Arizona. And next slide. And Maria, a chef and entrepreneur, who reversed her liver disease through an indigenous foods diet. It's based here in Phoenix. Well, not here, because we're Tempe, but next door. So once the yearbook is printed, it'll be distributed to leaders in government, academia, philanthropy, and media. Next slide. And we'll share on social media to get this information out to Tempe residents. Next slide. Through the project, I also created an advisory group that provided guidance. It's a collection of eight stakeholders, and we were able to continue conversations with local firsts and partnerships with Native Americans to figure out ways to keep this group of stakeholders engaged. Next slide. So I have helped Tempe to start these relationships with indigenous stakeholders that could extend into further projects, like partnerships, more partnerships with ASU, and collaborating with Tempe restaurants. Next slide. From this project, I found that the sustainable local food economy and indigenous foodways across the state have shared values like environmental stewardship and futures thinking. COVID has overwhelmed indigenous communities, but we're still seeing increased interest in indigenous foodways and innovative ways that these entrepreneurs are growing the food economy. With the natural resources, centuries of practicing sustainability, the indigenous food economy is an integral partner in the sustainable food economy in Arizona. Next slide. So Tempe can build on this work through variety of projects, for example agricultural demonstration sites, more food entrepreneurship support, and cultural food and wellness programming. Bringing in the indigenous perspective of the food economy has already led to a few new ways to create equity in other work important to Tempe. With indigenous experts, we've partnered on the Cool Kids Grant for Urban Resilience, the Build Together Grant on Sustainable Built Environments, and the Climate Adaptive Forestry Grant on Urban Forestry. Next slide. So creating resiliency and equity sometimes means taking action on statewide projects like this to benefit Tempe in the future. Through my work in centering indigenous perspectives and building a network of collaborators, Tempe is moving closer to achieving climate action goals and incorporating the guiding principles of equity, enterprise, engagement, and evidence. Next slide, please. So as this project comes to a close, so does my time here at the city. As Andrew mentioned, I'll be joining the team over at Local First to expand their rural foods programming. But before I go, I wanted to thank Mayor and Council for this opportunity. Andrew, Stephen, Erin, and Lisa in the city manager's office, Braden K., Grace Kelly, Janine Harrison, Shawna Warner, and the Economic Development and Communications and Media Relations Team. You all have helped me grow professionally, and I thank you for the privilege to have worked with you. Next. Next slide. That concludes the presentation.
Yeah. Great, Samantha, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any members of council have any comments or questions?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, no, I just want to tell her thank you. That was a great presentation, and just getting that education out there, I think that's awesome. So thank you for your work you put into this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Devaro. Alright, anyone else? Alright, great. Well, then Samantha, just once again.
Hi, this is Councilmember Garland. Sorry. Check it my time. Samantha, I just wanted to tell you that I think the program you did was wonderful. And I loved how you pulled in Local First into that also. And I just want to say thank you for all that you've done. And I just recently got to meet you, but I think you were pretty incredible. And I told you this before, that I want to hide you in my office so you can stay. But thank you for all that you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Councilmember QB?
Thank you, Sam, for all you've done. You brought us, you brought us funding. You brought us so many different initiatives and your passion and your expertise, unlike anything we've seen. And you know, the office of sustainability doesn't have a large staff, and you obviously did like nobody else could. I'm so glad you found a position at Local First. I'm so proud that they'll be grabbing onto you and sad that we'll be losing you. But thank you so much for all the energy you brought into this programming. It's so crucial and important to our city and to our partners, especially in the Salt River, Pima, Maricopa Indian community. We work so closely with them. So thank you for everything you brought to the city.
Thank you, Councilmember QB. Anyone else?
Well, thank you so much, Mayor and Council. Also, be on the lookout for a yearbook coming to your desk soon, your mailbox soon.
Sounds great. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Great presentation, and thank you for all of your work.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. This wasn't formally on the printed agenda, but there is a brief video that I think Mayor and Council would like to see in the public that was put together by our Tempe 11 team regarding COVID-19. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Greg to play that brief video.
In December 2019, the Chinese authorities notified the world that a virus was spreading through their communities. In the following months, it spread to other countries with cases doubling within days. This virus, respiratory syndrome-related coronavirus 2 that causes the disease called COVID-19, and that everyone simply calls coronavirus.
On a Friday morning, I woke up early in the morning with a fever of 104 degrees.
I just felt feverish, chills, body aches all over.
Fevered, body aches, chills, all the stuff that you're kind of hearing. You started getting the cough, everything with it.
And so I figured I had an obligation not only to my colleagues and our staff here at the city of Tempe, but my family and members of the general public in my position to make sure that I got a test. And the results came back in about roughly 36 hours, and it came back saying that I was positive.
I have a baby at home and a wife. She got it about two days after me, and she definitely had that tell sign of COVID where you just feel like your breathing's restricted and more of a cough and more difficulty breathing than I had. But yeah, unfortunately, we took all the precautionary measures and we still got it. So I would say it doesn't matter your age, your fitness level, the type of healthy precautions you take at home and in your personal life. Everyone's susceptible to getting it.
That's one of the biggest things that I've heard from patients. They come in, and the younger, the 20 to 50-year-olds, they'll even tell us that they thought it was kind of a joke, and they didn't pay any attention to it, and now they have it. Just check yourself. If you feel a little sick, you feel like you have a fever, don't let it go, you know, get in and get some, there's so many testing sites. Go to your family practice doctor. There's just no reason not to, you know, get in tune with this disease, because it is critical.
I tell people all the time that I'm not exactly sure how I got this. The reality is it only takes one time. The one time you don't have your mask on and you happen to be in an environment with somebody who might have it or might be asymptomatic. And so that's all it takes.
Well, we always say, you know, it's kind of like a ghost, because we have no idea how we got it in our family here. We don't know where it came from. We don't know why it happened to our family.
We were taking every precaution possible. We were wearing masks. We were washing our hands. We were doing everything. So kind of like my mom said, it's a ghost. Like you really don't know where it comes from. And it really hit our family pretty hard, and it really hit home. And it's harder for people to understand that that haven't lived through losing a family member to COVID. And it wasn't just a family member, it was my dad, you know. And he's supposed to be here for all these later memories in my life, and he's supposed to meet my kids. And he, like, it wasn't fair, and it's not fair that this happened to our family when we took every precaution absolutely possible. So I think that one thing I would definitely say is, it's not just about you. It's about now my mom, and it's about my brother, and it's about my grandma and my grandpa, and it's about all these people out there that you could potentially be putting at risk. It's a bigger picture than what people are kind of making it seem to be.
You know, at the beginning, when this first came about, and you're hearing of these things, it always seemed like, oh, you know, here are these numbers, and here are these numbers, and it's these people. Well, now it's us. It's our family that's been affected. Take it from us, it is painful. It's very painful to see someone have to go through that.
While this is a very challenging, difficult time for all of us to get through, it's also an opportunity to do some big things and create real institutional change. Because my perspective is, this is a very tough thing to go through for all of us. But I really wish during this kind of time, we would stop trying to fight each other, and we would actually focus more in saying, look, let's all try to love one another, take care of one another, and agree that there are some things that we can actually do to really stop the spread and really band together and address the issue. If all someone like myself, or the city government, or Maricopa County, or the state of Arizona is asking you to do, is to wear a mask when you go out to your favorite grocery store, or to a department store, or to wherever you might happen to be during any given day. It is the smallest thing you can possibly do to keep yourself safe and the others around you. And I would just ask that you do it, because together, if we actually band together and lock arms and agree on a uniform set of public health principles, we can beat this thing together.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I had. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Really appreciate it. And thank you to our team that put together that video. Great job. I've had a lot of people who I've spoken with who've seen it on social media, who've talked about just, you know, how excellent it was, and how it does such a great job of just getting across everything we need to get across to really stop the spread of COVID-19. So thank you. Again, to our staff who produced it.
Mr. Mayor, is it true you required a body double and that you had your own trailer?
You know, if I had a body double, I think my dad would be the person who would be the most frightened, because I think he would say that one of me is more than enough. Alright, let's see here. Alright, next up, go on to the consent agenda here. So item number five. All items listed on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the city council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated by an asterisk. Councilmembers may remove any item for separate consideration or to declare a conflict of interest. If a councilmember would like to declare a conflict at this time, the city clerk will provide the councilmember with a disclosure form. The public may submit written comments via the city of Tempe Speaker slash Comment Card on www tempe.gov/clerk. The consent agenda are miscellaneous items 5A1 through 5A7, awards of bids and contracts, items 5B1 through 5B5, and resolutions, item 5C1 through 5C5. Any agenda item marked with an asterisk is a public hearing item and can be removed by a member of the public for separate consideration. Are there any of my council colleagues right now that would like any agenda items removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration? Alright, hearing none. I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Still moved.
Okay. Councilmember Garland, one second?
Second.
So I guess it's actually moved, I guess, by Vice Mayor Keating and seconded by Councilmember Devaro. So, alright. I'm gonna go ahead and call for a roll call vote. Councilmember Devaro?
Aye.
Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The consent agenda is approved unanimously, 7 to 0. Gonna move on here. Alright, and next up is item number six, which is the non-consent agenda. All items listed on the non-consent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Councilmembers who may have a conflict of interest may abstain from voting on a matter, and the city clerk will provide the councilmembers with the disclosure form at this time. We don't have any items under 6A, miscellaneous items, bids, contracts, or resolutions. We also have nothing under 6B, which are ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. So we're gonna skip right then to item 6C, which are ordinances and items for second hearing and final adoption. The first item under the section is item 6C1, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a portion of a 30-foot-wide railroad spur easement along two parcels on McClintock Drive. The first public hearing was held on August 27, 2020. Madam Clerk, any comments received from the public on this item?
No, sir. No comments received.
Great, thank you so much. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Councilmembers, any comments or questions, or do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Keating, seconded by Councilmember Devaro. I'm gonna go ahead and do a roll call. Councilmember Devaro?
Aye.
Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Item 61 passes 7 to 0. Next item under the section is 62, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance approving a purchase agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation pertaining to certain city-owned land located at West Alameda Drive and South Diablo Way, which is Diablo Stadium and the Butts Hotel, and authorizing the mayor to execute the purchase agreement and related documents. The first public hearing was held on August 27, 2020. Madam Clerk, any public comment received on this item?
Nothing received for this item, Mayor.
Thank you so much. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Councilmembers, any comments or questions or discussion, or do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Moved by Vice Mayor Keating. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Arredondo Savage. I'm gonna go with a roll call vote here. Councilmember Devaro?
Aye.
Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams? And I vote aye as well. Item 6C2 passes unanimously, 7 to 0. Next item is 6C3, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance approving the third amendment to the lease between the city and Angels Baseball LP pertaining to Diablo Stadium and adjacent parking lot and authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the lease and related documents. The first public hearing was held on August 27, 2020. Madam Clerk, any public comment regarding this item?
No public comment here on this item, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Gonna close the public hearing. Councilmembers, any comments or discussion, or do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Moved by Vice Mayor Keating, seconded by Councilmember Devaro. Go ahead and do a roll call here. Councilmember Devaro?
Aye.
Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Item 63 passes 7 to 0. Next item is item 64, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending Tempe City Code Chapter 4 relating to alcoholic beverages by amending Section 4-6 relating to special events, spiritus liquor licenses, and temporary extension of premises permits. The first public hearing was held on August 27, 2020. Madam Clerk, any public comment regarding this item?
No input received for this item, Mayor.
Thank you again. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Councilmembers, comments or discussion, or do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Approved.
Okay.
I beat you, Joel.
Okay, I'm gonna say moved by Councilmember QB, seconded by Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Roll call vote. Councilmember Devaro?
Aye.
Just, you know, really maybe two comments on this thing, but obviously tomorrow is September 11th, and, and I know we're doing our dedication via, I believe, Zoom, but I just want to, you know, mention that, you know, obviously that's, this is the 19th anniversary of, of that day, and there's a lot for us to, and a lot of us have, you know, obviously witnessed it and been part of it, and, and it's, it's a time to reflect, it's a time to get together, and it's a time to come together. And that should be a reminder as we go through the challenges we have today that we do need to all come together and work for a better nation. So I hope people will be inspired to look ahead and, and obviously to know the sacrifices that our military and our public safety have taken on that day, and we just want to make sure that those respects are being given. In addition, just as we're going through our pandemic, and it's been said on your video, which was great, and just a reminder of that social distance, wearing your mask, we all do our part. We're going to really get through this, and we're really going to get through normal, a normal state of life here very soon. So just another reminder. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember DeVaro. Councilmember Adams?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to follow up on the 911 announcement that Councilmember DeVaro made, I just want to go a few more observations. I've lost a dear friend in 9/11 in the second tower, and it's always been very dear to my heart that we celebrate 9/11. Of course, we're not going to have any flags this year at Tempe Beach Park, but there'll still be a ceremony, and it'll be a virtual ceremony, and they'll start at 5:46 in the morning. Everyone's name who lost their lives will be read aloud, so please visit tempehealingfields.org to get on the call. My second announcement is I'm very excited to announce that the parks and splash pads are open starting last Friday, September 4th, and all playgrounds are open also to outside equipment. So that's, that's exciting. We do need to follow new safety guidelines, so please look at tempe.gov/reopening to, to check out the parks. It was funny, I went to the vet recently, and my dog is not overweight, but she said 99% of the dogs are overweight right now because of COVID. They've been hanging out, going to the refrigerator with their owners. So I just encourage everyone to go to the parks and get some exercise and start feeling better and enjoying some new scenery. My third announcement is that of Human Services Connections. I'm going to have a discussion with Councilmember QB, and that our focus will be on homelessness, hunger, poverty, and the date will be September 23rd, so mark your calendars from 1:00 to 2:30 in the afternoon. It will be a virtual event, and it'll be seen on Channel 11. So you're going to learn more about human services, the challenges, opportunities, programs/services available to strengthen our community. And we're going to have great presenters from Human Services, CARE7, and Homeless Solutions. And we'll also have nonprofit presentations from Tempe Community Action Agency, Mountain Park Health Center, and ICNA Relief. So I encourage everyone to join Lauren and myself in this Human Services Connection on the 23rd. Thank you very much. Those are my announcements.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Next up, Councilmember Keating.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm really excited about the event coming up with Councilmember Adams. Thanks to staff for setting it all up. And I also want to highlight a way that you can help your community. Our Human Needs, our Human Services Needs Assessment is live on the website now and is available to fill out anytime up until September 20th. We're getting feedback from a wide variety of residents, so it's really crucial. You'll be helping your community, you're helping identify areas of greatest need and directing our future spending priorities. So please go to the website, tempe.gov/humanservices. It's an easy way to remember. It's a little bit more complicated on the slide here, but please go and participate. This is an opportunity to have your voice heard in how we spend our human service dollars. Then Fabric, the Fabric event. So Fabric is our local fashion incubator that stands for Fashion and Business Resource Innovation Center, and it's a timely event coming up next week featuring our friends at Fabric. And, and you know, Fabric is just a short walk away from City Hall. They've had such impact on the community. What you may not know is that back in March, as the pandemic hit Arizona hard, and our healthcare workers and first responders were struggling to find enough personal protective equipment or PPE, Fabric stepped up, this amazing group of professionals and women stepped up and started making reusable, washable isolation gowns for frontline workers and healthcare workers. So please join ASU's Global Innovation, Global, sorry, I should know where I work, right? The Global Institute of Sustainability and Innovation and hear how and why Fabric transformed their business into an innovator in the PPE world. So hope you'll all join me that date. And then lastly, after a bit of a summer break, I'm returning to my monthly communicating, community outreach event with our residents and beginning Saturday, September 26th. The events usually take place in the afternoon at the library outside Connections Cafe, but this one will be in the morning and virtual, and I'm happy to take questions about anything and everything related to Tempe. But this month, we're going to feature Q and A about our newly approved neighborhood-based feral cat program. We've had huge numbers of calls and emails about this, so we want to answer questions that people might have. And this will be an online WebEx event, so watch for my social media feeds and for the CHMP Facebook feeds about how you can sign up to attend the meeting. And lastly, I just want to remark about 9/11. I'm thinking about Rob Ferraro tonight because he is a Tempe officer, as you know, and he heads up our Tempe Officers Association, and he was in one of the towers on September 11th, and it transformed his life. And I think a day later, he signed up to, for the police academy. Rob is an amazing person, and I was so privileged to hear his speech the first time he ever spoke publicly about what happened to him in that day. So I'm thinking of Rob tonight and, and tomorrow, and all of those who've lost loved ones and whose lives were changed that, that fateful day. So here's to you, Rob Ferraro. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember QB. Next up, we've got Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Garland?
I don't have anything, Mayor. Just wanted to say that I'm just so thankful to be here working with you guys, and I am really impressed with the, the help that I've received from so many people being a new council member, and we have great staff in the City of Tempe, and I just want to say thank you to all of them.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. And we got Vice Mayor Keating.
Yes, Mayor. Like my colleagues, I'd just like to take a moment to recognize the 19th anniversary of 9/11. It changed my life, as I know it did every American, and to thank those who served before, during, and after, you know, that attack, and we're still feeling its ramifications to this day. I think, I think the world would be impossible to understand without understanding 9/11 and how it went down, so I think it's important for us, and I know that we all have talked about it, and we're, we're doing an event tomorrow to recognize the gravity of the day almost 20 years ago. Hard to believe. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Keating. And just for me, I wanted to, you know, sort of echo my colleague's statements about, about 9/11 and just, you know, glad the city continues to observe, you know, and remind everyone of what a tragic moment that really was for all of us here in the United States. Also, wanted to thank the Tempe Exchange Club for the work that they do every year. They're actually a very small club, but every year they would go through the entire process of putting out all of those flags and producing an event that really reminds people of what, you know, about what 9/11 was and makes sure that, as we say, that we never forget what happened on that day. So I wanted to just, you know, thank the Tempe Exchange Club for all the work that they're doing, and even in a year like this with COVID-19, where things have had to be altered, they've continued to, to continue to make sure that this is sort of put out front with all of us of still doing a ceremony, which people can check out online. So I would encourage you to wake up tomorrow morning early and tune in online to make sure you can watch the Tempe presentation of the Healing Field and make sure that we never forget the day that our lives were permanently changed. Next up, we've got public appearances. Madam Clerk, were any comments for public appearances received?
None, sir.
Great. All right. Thank you so much. If there are none, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 6:57 PM. Thank you so much, everyone. And Council, we have an executive session to finish.